All right, I have seven o'clock. We'll call this the regular meeting of the Board of Alderman to order. Roll call please, Heather.
Alderman Angel. Alderman Borman.
Yes.
Alderman Lee.
Here.
Alderman Mackley.
Yes.
Alderman Simmons.
Four.
Alderman Wilkins.
Present.
All right, we do have a form of official business can take place. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. It's okay with the board to jangle around a little bit and move the mayor's appointment up to the rooms. Any objection to that? Okay, very good. I'd like to make the appointment of Roberto Mendez to part-time police officer. Spoke to Chief about it and Chief, if you want to introduce Roberto to the board.
Roberto comes to us well recommended. As you might guess, he not only speaks English, Spanish, and other languages, it might be more than a little beneficial to the police department. He comes here with his two young sons tonight and his father-in-law, I think that speaks to his depth there about Braden's father-in-law. So I spoke a little bit about this last week. This is a replacement to a part-time officer of Aaron Schilt. Aaron got himself murdered at Sergeant Mount Fulton. And just schedules don't marry up anymore. He's on the other side of the schedule for them, so it just doesn't marry up anymore. So I hope that you'll approve that and if so, we're going to start him with Agent Bradley Harris, by the way. So.
I move to approve the mayor's appointment of Roberto Mendez, part-time police officer.
Sir. I have a motion second to accept the mayor's appointment of Roberto Mendez to the position of a part-time police officer. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Could we have your spelling of your first and last name, please?
We have it.
I have it here.
She got it.
Could you just tell her by what her is? Thank you.
You can raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Roberto Mendez.
Aye, Roberto Mendez.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Missouri.
And the Constitution of the State of Missouri.
And the ordinances of the City of Centralia.
And the ordinances of the City of Centralia.
And that I will faithfully demean myself.
And I will faithfully demean myself.
In the office of part-time police officer.
In the office of part-time police officer.
Of said city to the best of my ability.
Said city to the best of my ability.
According to law, so help me God.
According to law, so help me God.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard. Thank you. Thank you all for coming.
Stayed around a few minutes in this paper.
There we are.
Just said made the appointment, James.
Yep. Just the pointer to the new part-time police officer.
Excellent.
Well, there you go. Here's your green light.
Okay, tell us if you find that track here and.
We're going to go out.
Consent agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
You all have the consent agenda in your package? Any questions or changes needed to be made? All right, motion to approve.
Sir.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as written. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The count's payable over twelve fifty. Questions on that?
I believe we approve the count's payable over twelve fifty in the amount of two hundred and seventy-seven thousand, four hundred and ninety-nine dollars and fifty-seven cents.
Sir. I have a motion and a second to approve the count's payable over twelve hundred and fifty dollars in the amount of two hundred and seventy-seven thousand, four hundred and ninety-nine dollars and fifty-seven cents. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. At this time, I'd like to open the floor. Comments from the citizens? Yep, come to the microphones, state your name and address for the record and go ahead with your comments.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
My name is Sandy Umstead and I reside at eighty-seven fifty Lake Sandlin Road, Centralia, Missouri. Thank you for taking time from your busy schedule to allow me to speak. Forty-three years ago, my husband, Bob, and I chose Centralia to be our home and we've never regretted that decision. During our years in this community, we have purchased many, many things through our local merchants, from vehicles to furniture. In fact, because we knew the benefits of doing so, in nineteen-seventy, we began purchasing with a purpose long before it was a slogan. We also helped our community in other ways. Bob and I have served as president of the Jack-in-the-Box preschool, Cub Scout den mother, public school classroom mother, church elder, church treasurer, and attended more school sporting events than my poor backside cares to remember. We love our town and we support it in many ways. That is why a recent episode with the Centralia Police Department greatly concerns us. But before I go on to explain, I want to make clear that we do not expect you, as the city's council, to change what has happened to us. Instead, we ask you to look carefully at when and how unequal justice is being applied by the police department. On Friday, June twenty-first, we were returning home after purchasing groceries when we were pulled over by a Centralia policeman. We couldn't imagine why, as we are both careful riders and had just sat at a three-way stop while a daycare provider escorted her children across the street. Even though we were turning right and they would not have been affected by our maneuver, we sat and watched until they had all safely crossed. We then turned west and traveled down Lakeview where we were stopped by the water tower. The officer told us we'd been speeding in a school zone. We apologized and asked the policeman about the possibility of a warning because we'd never been stopped in forty-three years of living here, but he said because it was in a school zone, he could not do that. So when the July third issue of the guard was published, we found it surprising that on the same day we received our ticket, a verbal warning was issued for speeding at Prenters Extreme Market, which sits across from Chesterborn Middle School, which you all know. And again, on June twenty-fourth, a verbal warning was issued for speeding at CIS, which I assume is Centralia Intermediate School. And a verbal warning was issued, a verbal warning for a stop sign violation at Lakeview and the Recreation Center, which is the same area where we were stopped. When we called the number on the ticket to find out how much the fine would be, we were told to check case.net and it would be entered there. But when we checked, it had not yet been posted. But when we read the July third issue of the guard, we were flabbergasted to see we were charged with going fifteen miles per hour over the posted speed limit in a school zone. We did not think we were going that fast and our ticket did not have the speed blanks completed. We also noticed in the guard, there were two other tickets issued within the same hour for speeding at the exact place where we were stopped. Michael Hand for sixteen miles over the speed limit and James Kaufman for eighteen miles over, both in a school zone. After returning home, we decided to contact the police department for an explanation. I called and asked to speak with Chief Dudgeon and was told by the lady he was out of the office that morning but would be back in the afternoon, so I left a message for him to call us. We heard nothing from him that day, so the next morning I called again and was told he was gone and would not be back in the office until Monday, so I left another message for him to please call us. But once again, we heard nothing from him. The third time I called, I was told Chief Dudgeon was not available, but I should talk with Lieutenant Byas. I explained to Lieutenant Byas our reasons for believing we should have been given a warning before the issuance of a ticket. He told me the police department could not change the ticket and if I wanted it changed, I would have to talk with the prosecuting attorney. So I then called April Wilson and left a detailed message for her. When she returned my call, I then explained the reason for calling. She told me there was nothing she could do and if I wanted the ticket changed, I would have to go through the Centralia Police Department. Now, Bob and I aren't road scholars, but we could figure out we were being given all wrong. Therefore, we just decided to pay the hundred-and-fifty-four dollar fine. And as April Wilson had so ungraciously stated, we did commit the crime. This categorization of my husband as a criminal by a so-called professional really disgusts me. Let me state for the record, Bob Umstead is an honorable man who has served our country, our God, and his neighbors, friends, and family all of his life. While reading the municipal court document in the July third first issue of the guard, we noted with interest that we were the only ones who had paid the fine for the speeding tickets issued on that day. Mr. Kaufman had requested and been granted a continuance. And most surprising of all, Mr. Hand's offense was not even listed. We were suspicious, to say the least. An acquaintance inquired with Chief Dudgeon as to why our multiple calls to him were not returned. He responded that department policy is to not take calls regarding issued tickets, but we were never told that many times we called. When asked why Mr. Hand did not appear in court on July twenty-second, Chief Dudgeon responded, Mr. Hand's attorney had requested a delay. Normally, those continuances, regardless of when or by whom they are requested, are addressed by the judge when he calls the case during court and are then recorded as part of the official record. We found it strange Mr. Hand's case had not been called and recorded on July twenty-second during court. We wondered if our acquaintance had not inquired about Mr. Hand's ticket, would it have simply disappeared? On August twenty-sixth, I attended the court and both defendants were called by the judge. Kaufman was granted another continuance and Hand, who was not in court and therefore did not respond, was placed in the stack, which the judge deemed warrants for arrest to be issued. The moment the judge placed the Hand folder in the stack, I observed Lieutenant Byas texting on his phone. While I was visiting with Padding, Chief Dudgeon entered the courtroom. As I was standing less than two feet from them, I overheard Chief Dudgeon tell Lieutenant Byas, she has all the information. Shortly after this, Chief Dudgeon exited the courtroom slamming the door after Lieutenant Byas and another officer snickered and chortled when a verbally challenged defendant tried to explain something to the judge. The officer asked Lieutenant Byas what was wrong with Chief Dudgeon and Lieutenant Byas replied, oh, he just gets that way sometimes. Neither of them had any clue they had acted inappropriately. It was at this time Lieutenant Byas approached the PA and had quite a sidebar with her, glancing in my direction several times and standing where he blocked my view of her responses. At the end of the court, I asked the judge if I could question something and he said sure. I asked if he was really going to issue a warrant for Michael Hand's arrest. As he was discussing with me whether or not I knew Mr. Hand and why he might not have appeared in court, the PA suddenly interrupts and tells the judge, Mr. Hand pled guilty and paid his fine. Why she didn't offer this information when the judge first called Mr. Hand's case seems very strange. Perhaps the answer lies in the sidebar she had with Lieutenant Byas. In my opinion, the behavior in court of Chief Dudgeon, Lieutenant Byas, the other officer, and PA April Wilson did not reflect positively on our city's reputation. I left this room feeling as if I needed a deep breath of fresh air. When the September eighteenth issue of the guard appeared, we read with astonishment that Mr. Hand's ticket charges were amended to speeding twenty-four in a posted twenty with no mention of a school zone, a reduction of twelve miles per hour from the speed he was charged with traveling. As my beloved grandfather would say, this just doesn't pass the smell test. It appears that foregoing the police department's rules and regulations, Mr. Hand was allowed to plead his case with Chief Dudgeon and contrary to Chief Dudgeon's earlier answer, Mr. Hand was not listed as being represented by an attorney. To us, it seems Mr. Hand's ticket was personally handled and overseen by the chief, his officers, and Ms. Wilson. We've wrestled with this issue for weeks. Having paid our fine, it would be much easier and less stressful to just turn our heads and pretend this episode never happened. But too many times in our country's history, when unequal justice by police departments has been applied and ignored, that easy road has led to even more suspect behavior and a permanent smudge placed on the city's reputation. So being mindful of this, we finally decided to report the inconsistencies of these actions to the full council. Perhaps you will see fit to ensure all first-time speeding violators are given a warning. And hopefully you, as the city's council, will instruct Chief Dudgeon to have rules and regulations which he consistently follows. The muddled way in which he is conducting business allows him too much sway in how justice is applied to the citizens of our community. We are optimistic you will strive for equal law and equal justice as the goal. Bob and I are well aware of how from this night forward, we and our entire family might be microscopically surveyed for any slight infraction which would allow the police department to apply to retribution. Previously, we thought Chief Dudgeon brought some great skills to our police department and had cheered the arrest of drug dealers. But we now believe those attributes are negated by his short-fueled temper, the sad antics of his officers in the courtroom, the disparity he allows in the issuing of tickets, and his apparent special deals for cronies. And if indeed, as we now believe, how you are treated by the CPD depends on how Chief Dudgeon feels about you, our community is much less idyllic than we thought for forty-three years. Perhaps along with speeding, our other offense was we have never been employed with someone closely intertwined with Chief Dudgeon. Once again, I'll quote my grandfather, something smells fishy and that saddens us for our lovely community. Again, thank you for your service to Centralia, your patience, and your generous offering of time. Good evening.
Thank you. Any other comments from citizens? Or cause of comments from citizens? Thank you, Mr. Senator. Thank you.
Thank you.
Economic Development Report by Chair of Commerce. I received an email from Jeanne Villain. Any questions on that? I was happy to see that some local contestants actually won, so let's see. Yes, sir.
Is there any record as to how much money, what the cost of hosting a barbecue protest to the city was in terms of utilities and personnel hours?
Uh, I don't have that.
No, we don't calculate it. There's no bill involved, so we don't calculate.
So it's just kind of a unspecified donation?
We take public service, just like anchor festival.
Did I answer your question, sir?
I wouldn't mind investing, but it's not something that I'm obviously known with this point.
Okay.
People ask me and I'm more comfortable asking you than they are.
Thank you. All right. Any questions about the chamber reports? Public hearing is not scheduled, is that still a case? Still a case, sir? All right. Axie, is there any finance? Nothing?
Nothing.
Commissar license?
Nothing.
Legal policy for shut-off of water services by customers. This is a resolution, requires one reading. Discussion?
This is the policy that was presented in committee with, in one instance, a may changed to a shell at the suggestion of the city to adjourn.
Okay. Any other questions? Oliver Day, would you introduce this one, please? Make a tent. Okay. Bill number?
Twenty-six seventy-six.
I move that bill number twenty-six seventy-six be given its first reading by title only. Second. I have a motion and a second that bill number twenty-six seventy-six be given its first reading by title only. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Continue, please. Bill to create a resolution entitled, "A Resolution of the City of Centralia, Missouri, Adopting a Formal Written Policy Concerning Residential Water Services Shut." I move that bill number twenty-six seventy-six be given its second reading by title. It's a resolution, so the first reading, you need a vote.
Call for it.
Call for a vote. Be adopted by roll call. You move that we adopt bill number twenty-six seventy-six by roll call.
Okay, let's do that.
I have a motion and a second that we adopt bill number twenty-six seventy-six by roll call vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Roll call vote, please, Heather.
Alderman Angel.
Yes.
Alderman Borman.
Yes.
Alderman Lee.
Yes.
Alderman Mackley.
Yes.
Alderman Simmons.
Four.
Alderman Wilkins.
Four.
All right, by your vote, bill number twenty-six seventy-six passes and now becomes resolution number.
R dash one-three dash zero-four.
Next, we have the establishing procedure for penalty amounts for delinquent license taxes. This is ordinance requires two reads.
This is one of the state law changes that I talked about earlier. It sits forth the situation when city licenses are delinquent, that now authorizes the city to apply. To apply a penalty of five percent up to a maximum of twenty-five percent for licenses that are delinquent unless the license applicant can show failure to pay as due to reasonable cause and not result in wrongful prosecution or fraudulent intent. So we need to adopt this ordinance in order to authorize Heather to be able to do this in appropriate cases.
Okay. Oliver Simmons, would you introduce this one, please?
Yes, but I have a question first. Is this in the, is this regarding business licenses?
Right.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Bill number, please?
Twenty-six seventy-seven.
Okay. I move that bill number twenty-six seventy-seven be given its first reading by title only.
Second. I have a motion and a second that bill number twenty-six seventy-seven be given its first reading by title only. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
A bill to create an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance to Enact Centralia City Code, Section sixteen nineteen point one, to Establish Procedure for Penalty Amounts for Delinquent License Taxes." I move that bill number twenty-six seventy-seven be given its second reading by title only.
Second. I have a motion and a second that bill number twenty-six seventy-seven be given its second reading by title only. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Continue, please.
A bill to create an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance to Enact Centralia City Code, Section sixteen dash nineteen point one, to Establish Procedure for Penalty Amounts for Delinquent License Taxes." I move that bill number twenty-six seventy-seven be adopted by roll call vote.
I have a motion and a second that bill number twenty-six seventy-seven be adopted by roll call vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Roll call vote, please, Heather.
Alderman Borman.
Yes.
Alderman Lee.
Yes.
Alderman Mackley.
Yes.
Alderman Simmons.
Four.
Alderman Wilkins.
Four.
Alderman Angel.
Four. All right, by your vote, bill number twenty-six seventy-seven passes and now becomes ordinance number.
Twenty-seven forty-three.
All right, thank you.
Merritt, how many more ordinance did you discuss at this point?
I, yes, I was going to bring it up in the first row of report, but I'll just say that there's, the other one that I mentioned earlier was dealt with liquor licenses and there's only, it's a Sunday restaurant bar liquor license specifically, and that's been repealed and as long as we get this done before the renewal, that we have one establishment that has a Sunday restaurant bar, like Heather, the fee will be the same, a hundred and fifty dollars. It'll just be cost some different, the effect of this will be that instead of meeting the different requirements for the Sunday restaurant bar license, as long as the resort license that the establishment has, the other six days that we continue to be met, they can, they'll be able to get a Sunday.
Permanent license.
Permanent license to operate on Sunday as well with the same requirements as they have for the other six days.
All right. Purchasing pad mount transformers. Do you have a good tab in your packet?
As things go, there's a pretty wide disparity compared to what we have.
I see that.
Staff's recommendation, a buy from Fletcher Reinhardt. These two, one, the one we had in stock has been used, the other, only two new ones will be used and one that was already one left in stock.
Okay. All right.
I move to approve purchase from Fletcher Reinhardt for two pad mount transformers in the amount of eight thousand, two hundred and sixty-eight dollars.
Sir. I have a motion and a second to accept a bid from Fletcher Reinhardt over two pad mount transformers for a total of eight thousand, two hundred and sixty-eight dollars. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Old business. Have a new business? New business? Harry, an appointment? I got a couple more people I want to talk to in a couple weeks, so I should have a couple more appointments next month. Other than that, any Alderman have a new business?
Well, what are we going to do? I mean, I talked to a guy from Prairie Hall that's on their council and they, they were going through the same thing we were with Clifford's building.
Okay.
They sent him two fines for five hundred dollars.
Okay.
And the building, he ended up tearing it down because it was going to cost him more in fines because they were just going to keep fining it. And now they ain't got that problem. And they're a town of, I don't know, a thousand people?
Okay.
It was five hundred dollars. They sent a thousand dollars thing to him and. I mean, is that something we can do, Merritt? I mean, can we start fining him?
Well, that's, that's a municipal court matter. That's up to the judge. A ticket would need to be written. What we have tried to do before, double up the enforcement through the other means. It is possible to, to, for a ticket to be issued for a violation, we have to prove that beyond a reasonable doubt, presuming we can prove a violation of the nature structure and prove that beyond a reasonable doubt. And I'm guessing Clifford will have the attorney there, so. prove a violation of the, uh, danger structure and prove that beyond a reasonable doubt, and if, I'm guessing Clifford will have the attorney there, so there ought to be a trial and, it will have to be, uh, there ought to be testimony by someone, uh, on the day of the, you know, the ticket is issued that, uh, that's in violation. But it would be possible to do that. If that's one, there, there are a number of different remedies that could be used, uh, that, that is one possibility.
Thoughts from the council? Thoughts from the board?
Thought we talked about that kind of thing before.
Oh, well.
Plus is in my head. I mean, we, we had taken two, or four.
Right. On more than one page.
Right. So, I mean, are we, is there a different angle or something, I just, I mean?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know.
The, it, it starts out, I mean, I, it depends on the facts that you alleged in the ticket, I would say, uh, I mean, an approach would be to, uh, try to determine what could be a violation, it could be observed without any kind of, uh, expert testimony, find something that would be possibly a violation that could be established as easily as possible and, and take, and go that route. What has happened before is that, uh, what was alleged, uh, was not able to be proven satisfactorily. I mean, if you go way to, we have a different judge and, and I would, I would have to say, I think the judge was somewhat sympathetic, wanted to avoid, uh, finding the person, had a different philosophy than the judge in the town that you're referring to. Uh, that was, that was an earlier judge, that's not the current one, I'm not aware of how this current judge would, uh, approach this, but, uh, you know, that would be a possibility to, uh, to go, go around trying, trying again, uh, but I, I think it will be, it's one of those things that, uh, it needs to be done carefully and, and because we know that he would contest it and, and it will be, uh, need to be proven beyond a reasonable doubt at court. And I have no idea whether that, that person in another town even protested, it may not even showed up, they not have done anything.
I, I don't know if he can, he didn't say, but he said he wrote, they wrote him two tickets for five hundred and...
Well, rolling tickets and then the judge decided to issue a fine, uh, and whether there was any, uh, the person may not have contested it, or may not have showed up even, but, uh, the, the judge would have made that determination, it wasn't the, police department, it wasn't the city that did that, that was, that would have been the judge who would have issued, who would, uh, ordered a fine of whatever that amount of money.
We talked last time about doing a visit.
Yes.
So, the report back, um, I mean, we haven't done that yet, but, uh, of course, I, I'll be very honest, I'm not, I hope so. Well, it resulted in paper.
Right.
But I do believe there's wording in the ordinance that talks about the fact that he's working on it, isn't there, and, and isn't that basically what the, the...
That was among the traditions that we cited last time, that he had a permit but no discernible work had been going on for more than thirty days, and that's when it produced his...
Sure.
Diary.
Right.
The show did, yes, he had been working on it.
But is that actually in the wording, the ordinance?
Merrick's looking at that one. Well, it does, that is a defense to the type of action we took before, that if, that, that Lenas, the building inspector cited him and says, if you're doing work, uh, you're entitled to be given an opportunity to do that. He availed himself of that opportunity, uh, he did not do that earlier, but he did this last time. The, I would say we would just need to be, uh, looked at to determine, uh, if there's some way to, the, the, you know, what, the, our city ordinance is based on the state law and it follows it meticulously, uh, and it's possible that, uh, I mean, I have no way of knowing what was done in, in the situation, uh, but there is a provision that Lenas followed that, that's in the ci, that's in the, uh, city code that's based on the state law, and you have to understand that, uh, in general property owners give them due process rights, and that's what this really, in effect, does. It says there's a hearing to, uh, to obey a notice to evade a public nuisance, uh, and it says whenever there shall be a failure to obey a notice to evade a nuisance by not commencing work in the time specified in such notice, well, he, he produced evidence that he had done that, and that was what, what set us back before this, this latest time, uh, we had to hear him before the mayor, uh, it does, there is a provision for, uh, let's see, section five dash twenty point seven, uh, and I mean, and there, there are provisions that, that the five hundred dollars is the, in general, the amount of the fine that's, the maximum fine for ordinances in general. Uh, section five dash twenty point seven, uh, provides that, by state law, they, they have exceptions in that case, and it says, any person who is convicted of violating any provisions of this section shall be punished by a fine of not more than a thousand dollars. And that's what, uh, I, when, uh, we did this earlier, when I was a city prosecutor, I, I did ask for the maximum and the, the previous judge declined to, to do that. Well, and it even provides in certain situations for, for a fine of not more than two thousand dollars. You can, that's in subsection E, paired with the data, five dash twenty point seven, uh, I would say that, uh, what certainly could be done is, is, is what, is to review this again and to follow what is specified in here, but what I think Lenas tried to do is, is, is follow what, uh, what it provides in here to do, uh, and the times that we have, uh, as I said, uh, Mr. Del Rosso did not commence work the first time, that was not even an issue, and, uh, he, he did this time, he has, uh, hired legal counsel both times, there were different issues, but, uh, the second time, he's, he's elected to go the route of trying to do work and documenting it, which is what he needs to do, and that's what caused, that, that's, that was his defense, his, uh, legal defense this first time. Uh, that had not happened before and, uh, you know, a, a different approach could be taken as far as what is cited, uh, and possibly one approach would be to cite what is, uh, the minimal things that, that can be seen, uh, from, from public property.
To get those corrected.
And, and even if that doesn't, uh, accomplish everything that you'd like to see accomplished, it, it might be one approach to, uh, if, if he is working, does work on it, uh, you'll be able to observe that. Uh, it was not entirely, some of the, uh, work that he did the first time was working the inside of the building, which is what was cited, and it was more difficult to determine, to, uh, notice that. So, I, I would say that, that what, if, uh, it was decided that this is the proper approach, that, that, uh, particular provisions of the particular efficiencies in the building could be looked at and, and cited and, uh, you can go that route. Again, following the city code, which follows the state law on this. It's, when, when someone like Mr. Del Rosa avails himself of legal counsel and spending the money to do that, uh, it does make it more important that you follow the, the state law on that. Uh, I have no way of knowing what's happened in this other case, and, and some other cases possibly, people don't hire an attorney, don't, uh, contest it, don't do anything, and that does make it easier.
What are your thoughts? Patrick?
Uh, I'm pretty much under the impression after the hearing before, when the judge found in Clifford's favor, that our hands are tied until he either stops working on it or...
It completely falls into...
Exactly.
Yeah.
That was what I had the impression of.
Okay. No?
It's a problem. I don't know that, like, like to see something done, but, like, I think I said, maybe another time is, it's, it's a problem, it's probably a costly prob, problem, no matter who should happen to step forward and take care of it.
Right.
But I'm not sure that Clifford has the capacity or the city has the desire to...
Right.
To really buy onto it.
Okay. Jim?
Well, I, I kind of fall in line with John there, I'm a little overly sympathetic to Clifford, but, uh, I think that his, one of his major stumbling blocks at this point is probably financial and... And I don't think the city wants to really take on that, uh, project.
Right.
So, I don't know.
No?
I don't want to say take on the project. I'm turning it down, so, I, as long as he is continuing to do some work on it and show that I really applied the will.
Okay.
Well, I did, uh, have some comments from some citizens, I had talked with Mayor last week, uh, last weekend, and, uh, a couple of citizens had indicated that they were at a point where they would like to contribute in some form or fashion on, uh, getting the building taken down completely. But they didn't give me a dollar of, uh, compensation.
I'd just say happy for their pockets and their...
Exactly.
Well, and, and let's remember, I mean, you, you and myself, we visited him, and I believe we ended that with, you know, he, he did go over items that wasn't in his list.
Right.
I think we at least owe him another visit before we start going back to that thing.
I, I think so too, but I, I agree with that.
So, I, I don't know, those are my thoughts about it.
These citizens weren't willing to purchase it, you know?
And, although I did, I'll throw that for them.
Did you pass that every time?
It's not for sale, but, uh... Right.
Oh, most things are for sale, the prices, right?
Yes.
Uh, I think we'll try and make contact with him and, uh, are you both willing to meet with him again?
I, I mean, I think he needs to be the first again, because we're the three that went through it.
Okay.
So, I mean, to, for us to base, oh yeah, he's a, he's obviously made work in this area, I think he needs to be the first, I was saying that determination, because we were the three that went through his building.
Okay.
Those are my thoughts.
So, thank you very much.
And then wait, wait for us to come back and say what we found before.
So, if he, alright, so if he does make progress, you find out he does make progress, then are we just gonna keep going over there and keep checking on it, or?
Well, that was what we talked about from before.
Yeah.
Was, and, and, and I think as Merrick was saying, is as long as he is making progress towards it, one of the things when we were there that I've tried to impress upon him is, of all the things on your list you want to get done, this stuff has nothing to do with you being a nuisance or a dangerous structure, I don't care about those. I mean, it's great that you're trying to get these done.
Right.
I don't really care about them, my interest in being here is that you finished the list of the things that make you, you know, not...
Right.
Yeah, that you're in violation of.
Yes.
And those are really the biggest things that I'm interested in.
Yeah, I mean, if he brings it up to where he's not breaking the ordinance, then there ain't nothing to do about it.
Right.
But you look over there and there's a lot of things that he's been, you know...
And, and all I'm getting at is that if he is making progress towards that list though, I, I mean, that's what exactly Merrick is meaning, I, I...
Yeah.
I think before we go much further in making determinations as to how we're going to proceed, we need to do the, the next step.
And I'm not, I'm not so sure that issuing tickets and assessing fines is the way to go at this point, because if he's having financial problems with taking care of what he's doing now, adding to those financial problems, I don't think there's no solve the problem. Does that make sense?
Sure.
Um, I, I think he will take what limited resources he has and get another lawyer, you know, and try to, and, you know, or someone will get a lawyer for him. You know, I, I think, uh, I wish that he would, uh, you know, use those resources that he has to, you know, make greater strides in completing his building for...
Yes, I wish the building a speedy recovery.
Yes. But, uh, I'll try to contact him this weekend, something up to go over there some evening next week. Okay?
Just not Tuesday, that's correct.
Right. So, do it, five o'clock Tuesday. Alright, uh, thank you, Len.
Yep.
Um, any other new business from the alderman?
Alright. Len?
Nothing.
Nothing? Okay. Merrick?
I need to search for something. I covered it.
Okay. Uh, Heather?
Just wanted to mention real quickly that I think all of the videos are now up on, on YouTube and have been linked to the left slide.
Thank you. Oh, thank you very much. There. Alright, as may arise?
Yes.
Yes, sir?
I talked about it a little bit last week, that, uh, Remington Street, uh, on subway, ask you to go do a surveillance run out there. There's some folks out there looking to us to help in some fashion if we can. Couple things come to mind. You can either speed bump for a lack of a balance, speed behind speed mountains, bounds of dirt, or, this came to me as a second amendment option, on me. I think about this a little bit then. I know of no reason why we couldn't consider, the speed limit is twenty-five thirty, depend on the consistency, twenty-five thirty, eighty, whatever it is. You could speed zone that from Remington to the end, you could speed zone that street. You notice as you drive down the highway, you know what the speed limit is when it comes to a whatever area, it, the sign will read, "Speed Zone." The speed limit is always in place in that area. But the speed zone takes it down to even smaller for that specific purpose. You could give some consideration to posting that as a fifteen mile an hour speed zone from twenty-two back to the end. And sign the thing.
What's the current speed limit in that on Remington?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five, that's the standard speed limit throughout.
Yeah.
For out of the city, it's twenty-five there, twenty-five.
If somebody is obeying the law there and driving twenty-five, to me, that still seems quick for you.
That's fifteen miles an hour too fast. I don't know how you get to twenty-five unless you drive through, uh, Mr. Dickerson's due place. I don't know how you get to twenty-five unless you drive through Mr. Dickerson's due place.
I like that idea.
I, I think that's, yeah.
Now, what's their, is there a speed limit and a speed zone?
A speed limit is a statutory speed limit, you know, whatever it is, fifty-five. The speed zone is more, the speed zone is more of a recommended, not to exceed advertisement for that area.
Kind of like a targeted area.
Yes. Yes. To enforce the speed zone, it's different than writing a normal speeding summons. Eighty and a fifty, so we say, okay, that's easy, even I can do that, regardless of what someone says. The, the speed li- uh, speed zone is, you, you still write it, say thirty-five and then twenty-five. And then in the bracket you indicate on the summons, speed zone, to let someone know, one, that there is a posted speed zone. It's just another, think of the speed zone sign like you would children at play, school bus, Little Dumbo.
Like a school zone.
Yes, it's kind of more of a dangerous improvement kind of thing.
Yes, you can make that case.
Playing or something like that.
Yes, you can make that case, now, uh, we don't, uh, you get to rip here. But I like that speed zone thing. Our, our city administrator, God bless his feet, pack of heart, he may not like that, wanting to sign the thing, I get it. But on the other hand, good folks have asked us to look into it, I think we should. And I like that speed zone idea, that, that is but my point, counterpoint, I'm, I'm sure the, the left is gonna speak for it.
Will it make any difference to the offender as far as slowing it down?
Well, it might have some shock value right first and then maybe.
The amount of the fine?
Yeah, you, that's hard to dictate that, as in who, you know, like.
Right.
That's hard to dictate because.
The judge.
Yeah, it's hard to get from the judge, but how you enforce that is to speeding summons. Something such over the posted limit and then in the bracket, speed zone of fifteen.
Something to consider.
What's the lowest lawful speed zone?
First and tens around.
Where do you see fifteens all the time?
Fifteen, they're low, they're out there. Too low?
But that would be a low, that would think out there, if you could sign the thing for, and, and read the speed zone fifty, then you could sign the thing, speed zone, speed zone ten.
Because I mean, that is, if you got vehicles parked on both sides, that's pretty narrow to start with.
It's tough.
And then you've got that curve in there, which is a thoroughly tight curve anyway.
It's tough in there.
Lynn?
I'm not sure I agree with the distinction between a speed zone and a speed limit, but regardless of that, uh, there are a couple of considerations. I was talking with Dave all the way through the meeting this time, I don't have per se an issue with even declaring it as a fifteen mile an hour speed limit. Because I think to the man on the street, it's a difference without a distinction, they're not, you, you can't do the explanation that Larry gave even if it's legally checked in court and expect people to understand that. I have the authority under the city code to do temporary traffic control devices and, uh, I can suggest that maybe even that is a further effort to, to do just that, post it at fifteen. As a speed limit, not a speed zone. I'm not sure whether, I believe that's even enforceable in court. But eventually it would have to be followed up with the ordinance that would be qualified in this, in the city code.
In the, in the fine schedule, right?
But it, it's an experimental traffic control device, that's allowed. Good deeds have unfortunate consequences, if you do this particularly successful. I would caution you that you will get a great number of other requests from people who want nice quiet neighborhoods to.
Yes.
Similarly low speeds. You can't really do the whole city with all, like a collection of fifteen mile. I can't idle that slow.
I agree with you, I believe that.
Yeah, well, I do, but I mean, no, as a mechanical function, you keep your foot off the gas and the brake and your car does fifteen real fast, if, if it's a need repair. So it, it's real easy to get to fifteen. But I'm, I'm willing to, to post it at fifteen. The thing is, somebody's gotta observe that area, the police or Mr. Dickerson or somebody, to see how effective it is.
I'm wondering if we might have a zoning something. Is there that particular subdivision, the way it's built up? Uh, when I went there to look specifically, it was in the middle of the day, I'd say a lot of people were at school or at work. There weren't that many vehicles, there was a couple of construction trailers or something like that on the street. But I did see several boats and driveways and cars parked across sidewalks. It just looks like they're trying to stuff six gallons of water in a five gallon bu- bucket. And I'm not sure how much the city can effectively do to adjust that on that street without bringing just what we're talking about here. Everybody else will want their speed limit in their neighborhood. You know, it's just a bad deal. You know, I'm not sure. And then, then it just, I'm not sure what you do about that.
Well, what about the idea of, like, do some?
I mean, we could do it temporarily, as we said, see what happens.
You could almost make the justification based on its population density out there.
You think it could take it as a case by case?
And then, you know, if you had other neighborhoods that, well, I want fifteen, you know, well, we made a policy because, you know, this is a single family residential area, I mean, I don't know.
I mean, there wouldn't be any, is, is there any statistics or crash data or, I mean, there wouldn't be anything like that out there, would there? Other than being complaint driven?
Have there been any tickets or accidents out there, Chief?
That's the thing about it, how are you supposed to get back in there and write a summons?
No, but have there been, has there been any accident?
Yeah, low speed backing in, you know, low speed backing out onto the street, a couple since I, since it, especially built on around the corner there. And nobody means to do it, it's just parked in there so tight.
But then where, as a result of speed, it was just because of the accident.
I think it's gonna get worse when we open the other end of it, if we ever get.
That's very, it's likely, yes.
I think it's worth a try.
Yeah. I mean, that, that doesn't mean I'm gonna be willing to do it in a lot of other places, but I do think that the density is a, there's an issue out there.
I don't think I'm comfortable doing it as a case by case, you know, and we're seeing this kind of situation, I think the city goes to people a little bit.
And it could actually get better when you open up the other end, because now you have two directions to go. People on this end aren't gonna see the people coming and going on the other, it's gonna take a short time.
I think good. But I think there are a lot of people going there thinking they run through it all the way through, that it doesn't actually do it.
Can't help that.
That's, yeah. You think after the first time they learn? Alright, any more as may arise? Thank you, Chief.
I'm hopefully adjourned.
I have a motion to second to adjourn, although it's a fair request.
Aye.
Close.